Yep.
Oh, yeah.
But it's a different one.
Yep, absolutely. Yeah, absolutely. You would definitely. Okay.
All right.
I need to be very courteous.
Yeah.
I have to crack them.
I'm glad you're here.
It's a great idea.
That was a problem.
That's a problem.
Okay.
I would let it go.
That was what I.
It's in that room.
Basically.
That was all good.
But I think, um, we should. Yeah.
Pretty good.
That's kind of.
He has a motion.
Of course.
Never does.
Yeah.
Oh.
He's sitting there.
That was. That's right. The tracks.
She is six four.
She's sound.
Oh, yeah.
She's fast.
She gets six foot.
She's short.
Just don't. I don't remember. What about me? And she made.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um.
I was.
Really?
She said. I think she's. She's wrong. This is not. I said, where are we?
I have to do that.
I want to listen.
We can.
So.
Yep. I said.
I'm.
I know.
Good.
He's.
She's going. She says.
She's going.
There's a.
Like.
They're.
Right there.
I'll.
I'm.
Sorry.
Yeah.
Help me.
Thank you.
My God.
Thank you. I got you.
How.
Keep going. I will. Uh.
Oh, my.
I'm not.
I need you to.
Well, we didn't see that. Your. Time. You.
That's good.
Oh, that's. My. I don't know. I want.
It's.
Because they are. Listen. I don't. I don't. I don't. I don't.
The deep. The. The. Chief. You know. You. 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 You.
I like. I'm. Yeah.
You would work. The first. Or is this. This way too?
You know. Next. We. You.
I want the town to meeting to order please. It's just. It's six thirty. Um, so. Commissioner Haggis, if you would do us the honor of the invitation, please.
Absolutely. So I'll stand by your head place. Dear heavenly father, thank you for giving us another day. Thank you for the many blessings you bestow upon us. We give you our praise and thanksgiving. It is right for us to give you our thanks and praise, for it is you who are responsible for everything, for we are your stewards. Grant us your continued. Grant us your continued blessings as we seek to be good stewards and continue to do your will in all things. In the precious and holy name of Jesus, I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. Uh, let's just. Question. Please. Please.
Uh. Let me release this to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. If you would, it was the honor. Uh, the. The citation of the town of Salo City.
Yes, ma'am, I'd be glad to. To advance a framework for our success through balanced governance, dynamic partnerships, and an engaged community.
Thank you.
Oh. Commissioner Salo, if you would do us the honor of the recitation of the town of Salo City, the wishes, thank you.
Yeah, ma'am. College of State and proper and private community as well. That. That very. Innovation and education. That's. Special. And a role competitive.
Thank you. Rowley. Are there any adjustments to be taken?
Uh, no, ma'am, there are none. However, I do need to make a correction to the minutes on page twelve.
Okay.
The. These are the minutes from September the seventh. And Jennifer, I believe you said on the second line where it says commissioner fatally started presiding over the meeting. That needs to be struck from the minutes.
Yes, I did not presume. Oh, my manager is still too. Where it says elected town officials present, I just noticed that. It's correct where it said I was presiding. Of course, I wasn't presenting.
That's all I have, Mayor Proten.
Okay, Sonny, the motion.
Make a motion to approve the adjustment.
I would favor.
Aye.
Make a motion to approve the. Yeah.
I would favor.
Aye.
Thank you.
All second.
Sorry.
I just. Second. I favor.
Aye.
Sorry.
Up here. Is that Janet Surgeon?
Jack Meadows.
Yeah. We just did that.
Within.
I want. I'd like to. I couldn't. I'll. Thank you.
I can read for GM. Board members, Mr. Manager. Uh, in your packet, schedule B, I'm on page twenty-nine. Uh, of what I printed. Um. This amendment started by having a conversation in my office. Uh, with, uh, folks that are here tonight right behind me. And, um. They've got a single wide mobile home located at eleven thirteen North Fifth Avenue. And that little home has not been lived in in many years. It's been abandoned for several years. And they desire. To replace that single wide mobile home with a double wide manufactured home. I agree. Eleven thirteen North Fifth Avenue. Uh, it's on my map on page forty-six. So after having a conversation, we're thinking about this opportunity. Uh, they want to take advantage of. Uh, you know, it's just all out. This, uh, is zoned RTN and the single wide manufactured home has been abandoned. Is lost its nonperforming status. Uh, it can remain abandoned. Uh, I guess we could pursue minimum housing act in a home like this. Uh, we have not. It is not at the top of our priorities at this time. So, um, uh. They're not. The family's not interested in replacing it with a stick built or modular, but with a double wide. Double wide manufactured home would be, uh, with a laceration foundation. And, um. It would meet the roof pitch requirements of our ordinance and so. So. It's a plan of as a discussion item. And the planning board initiated amendments in front of you this evening. So. If you will, we did a couple of things with the proposed amendment. Um. Mainly, we added a couple of definitions. That, that were not in our ordinance currently. The word cease, bring to, to come to an end, bring a company in, discontinue, and also. Short term. Those are a couple of definitions that were not in our order. Short term being occurring over and involving a relatively short period of time, less than one hundred. Okay.
I also had temporary in that as well.
Yeah. Yeah, you're right. Getting back to the end here. Temporary is a term that's not defined in the ordinance as well as vacant. That just, uh, you know, it's very important as we take on new language in ordinances or for reading ordinances, and we don't have good definitions. To read those images. So that's interesting. But to get to the bottom of this amendment. Um, on page forty-three and forty-four. Of your packet. We did a few other things that, that don't have real much impact on this proposal, right? But it just cleared up the orders a little bit. We, we added the word vacant and abandoned with the word discontinued. So that he would, uh, uh, include all three types of situations. And then, if you will, let's get down to, uh, letter E of that section on page forty-four. And this is the new language to establish the opportunity. That if a, a single wide. Well, manufactured home exists in our ten zoning district, that it could be replaced with a double wide. And I'll read. I'll read this one. Any legal existing nonperforming single wide manufactured home that's located within the R ten zoning district. That be replaced with a double wide manufactured home with zoning permit approval. That meets or exceeds the construction standards promulgated by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. That were in effect at the time of construction and a fix with a hood label. So that, that would be the standard that it could be. Um, a little background information. We, we looked at the location. Um. And, and then we did some research as we were discussing with the planning board. There are about seventeen single wide manufactured homes in our ten today. And I'll list those on page forty-seven. Seven of those seventeen are, um, are in the East Fourth and East Fifth Street area. Just to give you a, where there's a concentration of them today. Uh, and then they're randomly, uh, located all over, all over, uh, Salo City, as you can see, uh, from looking at the list. Um. I see Fourth and Fifth Street in some locations, Ninth Street, Fifth Avenue. Matter of fact, the, um, house that we're talking about is a single wide right across the road that's abandoned. I think we, I heard that is eleven. Oh, eight. North Fifth Avenue. And then Brook has a couple. And then MLK Junior Boulevard has four, I see. Um. There's a zoning map that was provided just as reference. You know, our ten is probably becomes more land area than our town than any other zoning district. One of our largest. Zoning districts, if you will, uh, within San Antonio. Um. That was some of the information that was gathered to provide to the planning board. Um. That concludes my presentation. I don't have anything else to offer. There is a worksheet that the board would like to consider this amendment. Like I said, um. The discussion was facilitated by staff. Went to the planning board. Planning board initiates this amendment. I think it's, uh. I recommended approval at the last meeting as well. And, um. I can answer questions. There are some folks here that could ask, answer some questions if there were additions in their respect to their specific situation. Other than the sixteen other mobile homes that have been impacted by this decision.
So, Jack, just, um. Apologize for not having read this, uh, more thoroughly, but. We have one seventeen A. When a nonconforming use is vacant banner discontinue. For consecutive period of one hundred days or vacant banner discontinue. If you're town without present intent to reinstate the nonconforming use. Property involved may thereafter be used only for conforming purposes. So if we are. If the, if the intent and purpose and spirit of the amendments. Is to allow. A nonconforming single wide to be replaced by double wide at any point in time. Even after. Uh, a period where you can only have conforming purposes. Should even be read to say, notwithstanding, uh, one seventeen. A. If any legal existing nonconforming. Cause one seventeen A makes it sound like.
Yeah.
Exactly.
That's right.
I'm, I'm okay with that language, Williams.
Since we all. We put a notwithstanding in there.
Sure. You're notwithstanding one seventeen A. Um, any legal. Is that what you're saying, Commissioner?
Well, I mean, cause it, it, it feels like the intent is to allow them to do it even after a point where they wouldn't otherwise be able to. So, uh, yeah, I think we. I would recommend some clarification when E is compared to A as to which section of the ordinance takes precedent. I don't know if there's any, any other thoughts on that. I don't know.
Just the, the question I had was related to our ten. And now is, um, refresh my memory, um, with zoning approval, double wide are allowed in our, in our ten.
So that would be.
In our, basically in our ten, with zoning approval, double wide, double wide manufactured homes are allowed in our ten. Now.
They're currently not allowed in our ten.
So we're allowed, we're allowing them only in, in the situation of these seventeen.
Only to replace.
Only to replace.
Single wide. Not. Establishing on a vacant lot.
That's right. Yeah, if you got a vacant lot. Or you got a stick built home. You couldn't replace it with a double wide. Only where, where, where the seventeen single wide.
I just want, I just want to make sure I had it clear in my head. Okay.
Okay. Once, um, those seventeen become replaced at some point in time, do you? Do we then go back and amend the ordinance? Back to where it was?
Yeah, if you didn't have any existing single lines, you could remove that section.
You wouldn't, you wouldn't need any more.
That's right. It's just now be a nonconforming use on its own. If it was, if it was a double.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think the general feeling that I, I don't want to speak further. But they felt like this was an upgrade from a single wide to a double wide.
Right, because if it's just gonna, because it's a, it's a landowner spaced with a no longer conforming. I can't afford to build a stick built house. Then there's, it's just gonna sit. So this is an upgrade.
Right.
This is an upgrade for the community. For the landowner who wants to live there. It's upgraded there, though.
Yeah. On page forty-eight, let's do it. Properties. You go six sixty, six fifty-eight, six fifty-six, six fifty-four. And. Possibly six fifty-nine. If at some point in time, one would replace those with a, with a double wide. You, you don't see one.
Right.
Okay. If it's some. Yeah. If at some time point they want to put a double wide, is there enough room there for a double wide? And will it fit into our existing setbacks and all that? All the other stuff that we have to.
Yeah, that's a new particular. Um. Those are all sort of one law. It's essentially a nonconforming manufacturing. Manufacturing. Home park. Um. They would have to meet the standards of our manufactured home park, which was, there are some setback standards. And it could be some limitation. I'm not sure if you can make this one up without seeing the scenario of, of them being located there or relocated. Uh, or replaced, you know, replaced. There, there may be some difficulty in replacing all four of the, the four homes that are, uh, twice as wide or wider. You know, because you got, uh, single wides that are in the twelve or fourteen foot range and double wides are twenty-four to twenty-eight. But if you got a bigger home.
Yeah, yeah, because it.
Could be tight.
Essentially, they would be twice as wide as they are in the photograph. Well, I just wondered that because it. They look, a couple of them look fairly close and, you know, fairly small lots on one of them. And, uh, I, I just wondered because it, uh, I ain't got a lot of risk. I ain't got a problem with upgrading, uh, from some of these old single wides to that. I just wondered if that, if, if they decided to do more, were we gonna run into something else that we hadn't thought about?
And that's six forty-four, yeah. That would be replaced.
It could.
Yeah, that, that would be one you want to tell them. That's the East Fourth Street. That's all, is that right? Yeah. Excuse me. East Fifth. Four was going wrong. So that's six forty-four, you said. That's an existing single wide there. Been abandoned.
Yeah.
It could be replaced with a double wide. Good question.
Yeah. Is, is, in this situation. Is it a legal existing nonconforming use? Because. Not saying the fact that it's gone for years empty.
What are you saying?
Or not being used?
Any non, any existing nonconforming. Cause I don't know if it's a, I don't, if it's nonconforming.
I take that to mean, yeah. Legal meaning it is still with, it hasn't aged out because of the hundred and eighty days.
Yeah.
And just now hitting the other, I was vague at the beginning.
Just, I think we take, add the notwithstanding, pick out the word legal.
Yeah, and I'll tell you where some of that thought came from is, um. We didn't want somebody to pull a single wide in the R ten. And it be existing. Um. But it, because it wouldn't be allowed, it wouldn't have been permitted. Um. But I think that's where that, that thought was. But I, I think we made a hand of that, a particular way. Um.
Legal existing.
Or maybe it's existing as of the date of passage of this, of this, of this amendment.
Right.
Would you, we used to get the word. Legal existing, notwithstanding one seventeen A. Any nonconforming single wide is manufactured, manufactured homes located in our ten is probably two double wides.
I think maybe leaving your word existing, if it's taken out legal.
I just, I agree.
Okay.
I feel good about that. The ten is.
Yeah.
Existing today.
No, we need to keep existing because we don't want another one coming up later.
Mm-hmm.
Existing, yes.
Yes.
I'm not comfortable with that. Will you?
Yes, that's good.
And with the, um, but to Bill's point, existing at the time of the ordinance or just. Or with the fact that we had a date of the.
Yeah.
Of the amendment, would that be sufficient?
I would be more comfortable with the date of the amendment because then, then you're, you know, existing. Hey, I put it, I put it there. It's existing.
Yeah. So existing as of the.
Adoption of. Is like two. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Cause then, then you definitely limit it to the seventeen or page forty-seven.
More questions?
Can we still move forward or do we need?
Yes.
A final draft?
Well, if we all agreed to the language, the, the way it was just altered then.
That'll have to be in the motion, though, right? You wrote the new language reference in the motion?
Yes.
Have to be first to hear.
Were we clear on that? What is, how it's more reading?
I think he's gonna read, notwithstanding one seventeen A, any. Uh. Any exist. In nonconforming single wide manufactured homes existing. At the time of this amendment. That is located within the R ten zoning district.
Remember that.
Okay, so it was the existing for them.
Mm-hmm.
See if there's more else.
Do you want anyone else before the.
Anybody else?
Anybody in the. Nobody signed that up.
Okay. Nobody signed.
Good. And what?
I'm close. Thank you. All right, to the worksheet. All right. Page fifty-one, exactly. All right. To the worksheet.
Make a motion that we. Adopt the amendment subject to the. Uh, forementioned proposed changes. And approve the action because the action is consistent with the adopted land development plan. In that. The land development plan recommends amending ordinances as needed to accommodate users or situations that arise. And are clearly covered by existing ordinances. And further that we approve the proposed amendment because, uh, as reasonable. Because it amends ordinances as, as needed to address changes in physical, social, environmental. Circumstances that make existing regulations unnecessary outbid. Obfuscate, and it modifies the development ordinances to be more user friendly where possible.
I think.
Aye.
You think?
Yes, the worksheet, right?
Yeah, we're done.
What, oh, this? Jack?
Yes, ma'am. Uh, minimum nine was. So this was adopted several months ago. We had, uh, agreed that we did not start enforcing this section until, uh, we live just below one. Um, just a few quick things that's happened. Uh, and that's just, just an update for where we are in this program. Uh, we provided a meeting invitation to, uh, to all the business owners, property owners in town. Maybe building owners, because that's what we're talking about. And we, we had a successful, uh, meeting with the code enforcement team and several. Business owners saying the twenty, twenty to thirty folks showed up. Uh, it was kind of, um. By your own. We gave the best we cafeteria in the meeting room and, um, very successful. Uh, answered questions, talked about the priorities as we had shared with the board, answered a lot of questions. Um, after that, we started taking a look at, uh, ones that we were already aware of and looking for, uh, buildings that may not meet the current code. After we accomplished that, we sent out letters. And in your packet, uh, there is a, uh, a spreadsheet that we provided as a report of where we are on load and, or status. On page fifty-nine is that letter we sent. And in the letter, we do a couple of things. We informed them about when the code was adopted, why we adopted it. Uh. We, we, we attached to the letter, the, uh, the code itself. And we highlighted those items we thought that there were deficiencies in those buildings. So that the person would know, the owner of the property would know for the duty work. And then we went a step further. And it says in that letter, below is a list of resources that may be available to this issue. We started talking to EDC and some of the things I already was aware of. And we found six items, probably others. But you got the due besides grant program. Commerce has got a building reuse. There's historic tax credits. Obviously, some of these buildings in, uh, downtown historic district and, and others. Um. The Rule Center has a small business loan program. Or Cannon County has a loan fund. And then USDA has a number of business programs. So we not only wanted to share with folks that there were codes that need to be addressed, but also opportunities for resource. Um. So this is all just getting off the ground. We just sent these letters, uh, looks like first ones went out August thirty-first. Cause this is pretty fresh. And, um, I will say that, uh. We stepped it up a little bit on one property. We got a lot of complaints on a property that recently, I'll just keep it quick up there on that one. If you have any questions, if there are others. The downtown one, Six East Raleigh Street, the, uh. Uh, we received a phone call that the roof had collapsed. Uh, they, they heard it. And, and, and you could see physically from the, um. From the windows, you could see through the building and you could see up into the sky.
Is that the one next to the, uh, Cannon Realty?
Cannon Home. Hair World. Hair World. Former Hair World, that's right.
Oh, yeah. Right. I'm sure.
So, um. So we sent a letter to the property owner, uh, beyond this, this, this more courtesy component, saying of the, did not receive any contact back.
Yeah, what about, that's not wrong. I don't know, beat the hut down.
They got one of the courtesy letters, matter of fact, they got one for all their buildings. Uh, the, the, the beach to hut, the laundry round, that used to be a safe house, the roof, it's got several holes in it. Uh, so he's been aware and I think, I think, uh, a code enforcement officer has had confrontation with the owner of that property. But, uh, back to Harold World, um, Dennis, you know, who runs, they can have a lot of experience with commercial maintenance codes and stuff. He came down and we took a closer look, um, Friday, he asked me to invite Chatham County Building Inspector down. They came down and put up a convenient sign and, uh, power was removed from the building, it was still on, it's still been paid the power bill there. So, uh, we're moving forward with the next steps and, uh, that is having a hearing with the owners this coming Friday, about immediately here. And, uh, our ordinance, since this one is up over another level, uh, it's been designated as condominium, uh, like imminent danger and, um, we don't have to take as long with, uh, citrus, I guess, others don't fall into that category, you know, you don't move through very quickly, but, um, I'm seeing some direction from the board that I put that theory in. And, uh, what we need to do, because this is a historic building, it's built nineteen ten, um, it's, it's all remaining from what was around it, I think, uh, the pharmacy building that was beside it, it was replaced and some of that's not, uh, doesn't go back to the early nineteen hundreds, the building that the Chatham Home folks in came later, it's not as old as this one. So there is some store value there and, uh, how does this project, there's several ways to handle this, you know, there's a building removal, uh, maybe salvaging the building. But at the same time, there's gotta be some sort of, uh, if it's salvage, how to protect it because it's holding water now. It, it, it's not, there's no water going off the roof, it just goes into the storm shelter and it's, it's holding order and sale and that issue.
Well, there's one more question, what about far as food alone? I knew Will said, um, he assigned, is they gonna do anything about this building?
That, that, that one got a letter as well, because it's a commercial building, it's in a residential zoning district, but it, it's, uh, it's a commercial building, so it, it got one of the non-residential letters. And I do understand that the property is sold, but they're new owners and, uh, they've not talked to him about their plans for refurbishing, but, um, I feel like it, it is gonna be something that, that would be a pity, is what the direction I've come, I've talked to a lot of people about that building while it was up for sale. And there was a number of options, there's two lots of that property. Lot on the road and a lot behind it. And, uh, there is some opportunity for, for redevelopment, but don't have any hard details for the site.
I think Willis Chip and then this.
I was just gonna, the building that we were discussing downtown, have we had any response back from the owners?
No, we haven't.
None?
Yeah, and then the letters that are going out, we're, we're working really hard on that response to these last letters. We're sending additional letters, uh, we, we just, this was one up this morning.
Jack, what happens if they, they decide they're not gonna do anything to the building?
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll put a plan of action together on that.
Is, is that building though, while we're discussing, is it on the historic register?
So it, it is, uh, it's on, it's a contributing building, that's what they call it, because it's located within the South City Commercial District, um, which is on the national, which is the district is a lot, is, the district is on the national register.
On the district?
It is a bigger district down there and then when that was done, they identified contributing buildings, the C D, if you look at the national register paper.
So how do those historic protections affect an action plan if the owners do not respond?
It does not affect them at all, um, because we don't have a local historic district, we don't have local historic rules, that's when it would affect that. Uh, the, the opportunity today is that they could get the store tax credits. Oh, there's that question, but there's no rules or regulations about what happens there, so, um.
Are the adjacent businesses in jeopardy of damage occurring to their buildings?
I'm glad you asked that question, uh, we visited, we couldn't get into the building on the west side, which is, was a church now, it's been a pharmacy. Right, uh, but we went into the Chatham Home building and, um, a- as they observed from the roof, it looked like there might be some, the wall may have pulled itself away from the Chatham Home building a little bit. So they went in and, and, and the first roof to your right in Chatham Home building popped a ceiling tile up and, and the bridges come falling out of the ceiling.
They just moved there too.
The, uh, the building, the Chatham County Inspection's director, he was the one that came and put the minutes out, he was the one doing some, uh, investigating. He got on the phone with the property owner of Chatham Home, Chatham Home building and asked, uh, if, if she would get a, a structural engineer to take a look at her building. And she was doing that to see if there was any, um, concern or it was, it was gonna be okay.
Those remediations I feel like would need to be on the owner of the, of Harold World.
So that's being checked into. Which, which building is that?
So all this that we talked about cannot be lived with at all.
We can, we can investigate, so the, all, all these letters that went out, went in the building that were in violation of the non-residential code? Is that building okay?
Just across the street, you know.
Oh, you're gonna repair, you're gonna repair it to a town?
Yeah.
But I don't think that one.
Okay.
That one up.
Well, I need to know.
Yeah, I think that one. If you're gonna repair it.
It's getting, it's getting to your letter.
The question that I have, um, the Kimball's building, I think a church bought that building and she was trying to find out some resources in order to replace the roof. I was just wondering if any of these resources could be something that could benefit them as far as, uh, what they need to do to replace the roof. It's going to cost quite a bit.
Yes.
You're talking about the, what, the old Kimball?
The old Kimball building down.
They're starting to get some damage on that selection.
Yeah, yeah. Cause she had, she had called me and I was just wondering if there, you know, what, if we have access to any other resources that may be able to help her in doing the roof.
I'll, 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 I'll make sure this.
If you will.
I will, and I will say this about.
Louis, Louis, what's that?
And just to follow up, Miss Boone, um, they have received a facade grant. Uh, this was awarded this past week, she got it signed, so, uh, about twenty-five hundred dollar grant, they're gonna do five thousand, but it was mainly for the exterior.
Right.
By the, the damage to the wood, they're gonna paint it, do some painting of the, uh, some other things, so it's a facade work, the roof was not included in that.
But if you can just follow.
Would you?
If it's got a, in case you want to.
On a building like Kimball's where you've got two, two sides exposed, not just the front like you do downtown. Could the facade grade also cover the side where some of the damage occurs?
It's any qualifying side, so it could be the alley on the rear, yeah.
They may, can they, uh, reapply for more funding with the facade grade?
Oh, yes, if there's funds, most of it.
That might be something.
Yeah, the, back to the one downtown, uh, the, the people that own, are they local? I, I don't, I don't.
We're talking about the one beside the Channel Realty.
Yeah, I don't recognize.
That's Frankie Mule.
Also, I know Houston.
Was her, was her grandson, so.
That's it, I just want, I didn't recognize that name, that's crazy name.
Yeah, you got, you got, uh, William and James is what's on the B, we, we know them as Brian and Jane.
Okay.
George.
Yeah, okay. She didn't strike a familiar code, like, something, is that, yeah, cause I knew Frankie used to own it when she was in.
That's her grandson.
Okay.
I will say this, um, uh, let's see, we went down there Thursday. Yeah, Friday, when we got to Harold World, the wind was awarded up. And the property owners, or the only one that should have done it, we, I talked to everybody, none of our folks, public works, our inspections. They must have been a property owner awarded that, so there has been some, that would be a little bit of response, I should, uh, share that with you, but that's only response on.
Are they the ones that put those cones and that?
No, what, what works with the cones and the barriers?
Well, I had spoken with her, I mean, it's been a long time ago, this been a year or two ago, that, her property and she was doing hair downtown. And I said, are you going to redo your building? And she said, my grandson's redoing the building, so.
Yeah, so, um, I went and seen, uh, Ms. Frankie when our first facade grant came out, we, we were running around downtown as I'm fishing, so I went inside. That was the last, that was probably twelve or thirteen, uh, twenty fourteen was the last fire inspection. And twenty sixteen was the last time there was an active fire. We do know that sort of the timeline, how things have kind of transpired where we are today. It's been a while, that's, that's been years.
Yeah, it's been a while, I, I know somebody that was years ago, was interested in going in there and had actually been working there. And some of the, there had been some water damage and it's part of the interior roof that followed and they, they were trying to work, but it never came to an agreement.
Might have been grandson too, I don't know.
Yeah, yeah, but anyway, it's been going on a while. Yeah, the roof has been leaking down there for years, in, in turn.
That, that pretty much concludes my update, any, any other questions about?
What's your recommendation?
For one of six east Raleigh?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, you know, I, 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 I'm a big supporter of maintaining our historic buildings. Uh, I'm, I'm advocate of that, so that, that's something I want to share with you from my perspective. I think owners are too, just saying for me, um, but I feel like that, that, it makes it complicated. That makes this, uh, repair and abatement a little complicated, but, um, we gotta clean that stuff up inside, it's, it's, it's all a problem, uh, you're gonna start having more and more issues. I know when the church, the church may even have more problems than, than the others, but, um, let's see what, what we can work out Friday with owners. And then come back, and I want to come back to the board with, uh, some solutions. Using Dennis as a resource, because he's got experience here, see how he can tackle this, uh, give you some options, hopefully.
Yeah, and I agree with him, the thing, the real thing that really concerns me the most is there's not been any response at all back from the, the owner of the property. And, but I agree, because it's gonna become a, if it hasn't already, a hazard to the greater community and business, like you said, it's surrounding the property. But I think that's great, see what they can do, but I would not let it drag out because it, it could be a danger.
Well, what's the timeline on that, Jack?
Uh, under, just actually working under, there, there is no timeline, so it's, that's why we quickly passed a meeting with us this week and, um, and try to bring back, maybe at the next meeting if we can.
Since it was, I've got a question, since it was condemned by the county building inspector, you know, that's a different but similar process to minimum, to, to this. You know, it kind of overlaps, it could be one, I see it all the time, with minimum housing, you're gonna do it under minimum housing or under just the, the building inspector, so.
And we're, and we're using this many evidence points, like the letters, what I think, were both of the public nuisance. Uh, section and the unsafe building section, so we're using multiple directions, so when we do things, it's hopefully good.
I'm just asking, the fact that it was condemned, would that not kick off the process under the statutes for building condemnation? I don't know, I mean, it's something you need to discuss with buildings.
It's good, Inspector, I will, thank you, we have a lot.
I guess my question too is, um, is this process six months, nine months, eight months before they can decide what they're gonna do with it? Or is this all connected?
Well, I feel like when I read those, uh, that being that we've considered imminent danger, it doesn't have to be a, a long run.
Okay, so there can be a time, that's what I'm saying.
What time line would have been on which method of enforcement?
Was initiated.
Is one of the one that's undertaken. And another fact too, Jack mentioned, is that whatever happened to that building, it's affected the raw neck to it.
Well, good.
And I know, but, but then, because they could possibly, could not, could be denied the use of their facility, which is a whole nother thing. Because it may not be safe for them to be in there, the wall is pulling, you know, is pulling away.
When you're talking about mold and they'll do their.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I mean, you're talking about office kind of crap in there.
Well, I wouldn't be too much worried about the mold, if the building wall was about to fall. Yeah, I might want to get out of there, but yes, but I, I agree with Mayor Kirkland that, uh, we need, it needs to have some expediences attached to it somehow. And, and a serious amount of, what do you call it? Is that, it's, it needs to be at the top of the list.
Last thing about this that I think is worth noting, the question asked at my day, if, um, who's allowed to be in the building? Nobody, really, um, I guess emergency personnel could go if they need to, uh, if a dealer permit was obtained. Then you could, uh, if someone, you know, maybe they start working on it, right? But right now it stands, none of that exists, and so nobody should be in the building.
Jack, the, uh, the tape is, is off there, tape's down, said don't come in there, caution tape's down.
Chris can help us with that.
Yeah.
Your public works, Chris, go ahead and do that real quick, the, uh, last one. That's all I have.
All right, so that was just for information.
Okay, no actually needed, no need, that's right.
So anybody else have any questions before we move on? Let's go to the waters, uh, inventory, that's inventory assessment. Um, is that, Jack?
Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem Board, uh, tonight, we have, uh, David is with the board to present the Water Asset Inventory and Assessment Plan. After his presentation, uh, we will be asking the board to adopt the resolution that's located on page ninety-one. Uh, we're moving forward with this so that we can file for, um, the state revolving fund law, uh, by the end of the month. So David is coming to present this, as you're aware, the, the board has previously adopted the wastewater asset and inventory assessment. So, uh, this is the follow-up for the water in its completion, I'll turn it over to David.
Thank you, Ron.
Hi, you're welcome, David, I'm David, I'm the Gills Associates, and, uh, as, as we stated, we're, we're working for the application that y'all have previously approved. Having an asset management plan, capital proof plan in place, it's worth ten points on that application and out of a, out of a total, uh, potential point, I guess, it's about a hundred. So it's, it is a substantial, um, point getter for that, which we hope will help us to have a good chance at getting funded for the application for that water rushing project in the, uh, what acre area. So, um, you know, the, uh, so I'll, I'll try to go fairly quickly, I do have quite a few slides, but please, um, if I'm going too quickly, I have certain last questions, I'll give it to Dan for questions as well. Um, I do have a lot of, a lot of information here, I'll, I'll try to hit the high points for you. Um, so I understand the board's had the, had the pack in hand, uh, to have a chance to look through some of that, but, and this is, uh, was funded initially through the, uh, through the Q, uh, as a, um, for, there's a grant application that was awarded to the town for doing an asset management plan of the, the system. The purpose of that is to review the assets that you, that you own, try to document material age, diameter, the, uh, condition of all, all those, those assets, uh, within the water system. We developed and calibrated a water model for the system, we'll talk to you more about what that is in a bit. Documented the efficiency, efficiencies found, and then we've, uh, set that up into a capital improvements plan, so a plan of, of capital projects that we hope can be undertaken within the, the next twenty years or twenty year planning period for that. The, uh, so the first part of that was helping, uh, water maps, utilize, uh, water mapping that had been previously, uh, done, some of those, uh, within the, uh, on, on RGS online and went out with the field equipment, GPS located, uh, the portion of the equipment, for the, uh, assets of each time, we located it out, we located hydrants. Uh, shot stuff like those, the water treatment plant, um, it tank, tanks, the bigger pieces as well, actually, uh, would make sure that we could, uh, find the pictures of them. Did, uh, a surface visual inspection of the, uh, items there that we booked out. Yeah, the, uh, so there's an overall of your water, water system map, um, you see that most of the, uh, water portion of the lines, there are that, that lighter blue color, which is a six, six inch water line. Uh, you've got, got a few larger diameter lines, you can see the sixteen inch line, the green line going out sixty-four to the future, uh, campsite there. Uh, so it's the, the twelve inch, ten inch diameter lines with the system, or some of the larger trans lines there. Um, and, you know, all that information is on, is afforded home to a website that, uh, the, this RGS, that the town staff has access to. And, uh, can, can edit, can, uh, get into and, uh, if they're going to a particular street, they'll look at what the, uh, the information they've got available there from this, from this. Um, so we utilize that map, all information we have about the individual pipes of the system, though, what's called a. Um, so we utilize that map, all information we have about the individual pipes in the system, though, was called a water model. Without getting into a tremendous amount of technical detail there, it's got, it is a model of the system that utilizes the the elevation of tanks, the diameter of the pipe, uh, we put in system demands um for how much water is being used at different places within the system. Uh, such as in one of your largest sheers, obviously down here, uh, their, their facility in downtown. So so their, their demand is put into that, that water model along with all of residential demands are dispersed throughout the system, other portion demands. Um, and then that, uh, that data we use to estimate how the system will function with those demands. So we, uh, that tells us what, what pressures are expected within the system. Um, and things like what about the fire flows within the system also helps us to be able to analyze uh future improvements to look for deficiencies with how the, how the system is, is functioning. Um, the, go ahead to the next one there. So the uh, um, the map that we've got there is the available fire flow based on that water ball. Um, and so you can see that most of your hydrants within the, within the system would do provide a, a good level of fire flow of about, of over a thousand gallons per minute. Uh, you have a few areas in some of the uh outskirts of the town where the system stretches out, where the place loads drop. Um, out, out towards the, out further on Sixth Four, Trip Cottage area, some of those are, are some of the white, white and probably ones down in the south part of the system. And then up, uh, you know, in some of the area to sort of buy that tank, that's what it's less than a thousand. But that, uh, I skipped over it. It's cal- calibrated as well. So we, not only did we look at what is a lot of cost is going to be, we looked at, here's a, we went out with a fire department and utilized data from their testing on individual hydrants to say when we flood the cider, we get a thousand gallons minute out of it, it's got sixty PSI residual. And we set that up on model to replicate that condition. We're able to make some adjustments to the model and, and like that, such that the model represents a, within five PSI to ten PSI, what the actual pressures that you're seeing in the system are. So there's, it's not, it's not perfect. Uh, there's probably still some spots there here or there that are a little bit more off. But overall, when our system looks, it's came out really, really well, such that we, we have a dependable setup there that can lay down on us. The other item we did is to pressure monitoring. We talked about this a little bit previously when we talked about. Uh, we did actually six different locations out in the, in the system as part of the project. So South Water Tank, Trip Cottage, Hampstone Road, four hundred and one, Mount Mount Air, uh, Glen Avenue, and one on Sycamore Lake Drive. We installed pressure equipment on the hybrid on the system and monitored that over a two week period to see how how the system functions, its day-to-day operation, what kind of variations of pressure that we uh, that we saw in the system. The uh, I mean, just a, a couple of graphs here. I've got, I've got a bunch more than this, but just to try to give you some, some highlights and you flavor of what that's, what that does. Um, you can see the uh, the blue line uh here is what that, the pressure monitor. This one in particular is at the uh, the south tank. Um, you can see overall, that one's actually relatively constant. We've got a forty-two to forty-six range out here. It would take a little bit, what does that in the system, which is you're close to a, close to a tank, we expect it to be reasonably uh consistent. The issue in that area is that, that, that pressure, we're not filling up the south tank. That tank is located so at the same elevation as your main tanks in the system, but it's so far removed from the water plant, the rest of the tanks, that the water just never gets down there enough to fill up that tank. It's, it's functioning at a lower elevation because of its distance, of the separation there. Oh, Trip Cottage is, is an area I just wanted to show you, being, once actually performing uh really well pressure-wise. You can see the day-to-day pressures. You're up there with the seventy PSI, pretty typically above seventy PSI. Uh, it does, does move around some, um, as you'd expect with the man, but it's, it's really, overall, it looks a, a solid. Uh, the typical pressure, yeah. Fire flow wise, that area is not as strong as some of the others because, but under normal domestic demands, it uh, it's performing well. Um, next one I've got there is at, uh, outside of Mount Mount Air's facility there. This one I just thought was kind of interesting to, to show you example of how that, how that system of breath uh is impacting and how you can see the, the variations in, in pressure with, with variable demands on the system is. Um, you, you can kind of pick out weekends as well. Uh, the areas where you see uh to the, to the left of the, the graph where you see some more consistent pressures, then it drops and it's consistent, but it's a score of steps in it. That's on the, all weekend when the demands are relatively low, because the pressures are generally higher there in that ninety, ninety PSI range. During the week, uh, Mount Air is using a lot of water. Um, and so you can see their, their impact on the system uh varies, that pressure from drops it to where the average is closer to down, down below ninety, more like eighty-five or, or thereabouts. And you, you see variations down into the, into seven, certainly there as there's the land varies. Um, the last one I've got on, on here is, is out at Sycamore Lake Drive. This is one of our other flood pressure areas. We talked about Homewood, I put that one again in this presentation, but um, this, this one shows the, the very, the, the pressure in, in that area generally when that, when the pump is, uh, is on, um, you can see the pressure is, is fairly stable, but it's low. It's uh, you're seeing in the, in the low twenties uh pressure for a lot of, a lot of area. The, the most interesting thing to, in this graph in my site, remember was that we've got the uh pump runtime that the water plant on there as well. So when that pump kicks on and off is when you see spikes in the in the system, some of those downward spikes, they're actually taking that, that pressure where the pump kicks off and you get a, a brief water hammer. So that the uh, it's that the pressure completely drops out of the system and then recovers. It's those are such large pumps kicking on and off, that water, water pressure. Uh, system components, um, I'll put the part of that asset management plan, it's a lot of occasions there is to uh, to identify condition um, and the uh, the materials within the, the system. Unfortunately, we don't have a lot of great information about the raw uh materials within the, within the system without digging up individual pipes. Uh, it's, it's hard to know what everything is in that. We're taking the best information that we could find from the uh, the town staff, from the uh, local water spot plan and others to identify the approximate uh distribution of pipes within the system, um, and assign conditions to those based on, primarily based on their material. Um, so, and you've got, uh, you've got about a hundred miles of oil, a hundred miles of pipe around six, system, six hundred four thousand feet. Uh, about a hundred and twenty thousand of that is asbestos cement. You can see that, that pipe is in fair condition. It's at the end of its useful life. Uh, for sure, you can see more issues with the, with the asbestos cement that's based on the, the age, the period that that was presented and solved. Um, but there, there, there's still, there's still a lot of that type of pipe out, the, out in the water systems around. Cast iron pipe is uh, is typically over piped, uh, installed before asbestos cement, uh, back into the, it pre nineteen fifties uh range. Um, ductal iron and PVC are actually hard number materials. Um, and those are typically more in good condition. And we do have uh quite a bit of uh, of two inch or uh smaller, uh, we read the registry and it's small, has any smaller two inch, that called two inch, um, galvanized iron pipe that's out there. So that, uh, almost, almost ten miles of, of two inch uh, that's still out there. It's a, in poor condition.
Before you go too far, because I'll forget to get in, on that Sycamore Lake graph there, and you were talking about when the pump kicks off, get the water hammer, pressure it up. Are there check valves in those, in, out there anywhere? Keep that.
There, there are check valves. Um, and that is the, it, oh, it's a water hammer as you have the, the momentum of that, that pump's pushing water out through the, the system. You can see about like a slug of water. As the pump kicks off, uh, that, it, that whole slug comes to a stop and then it wants to slide backwards. And so it hits that, um, you get, you get a low on pressure and then you get a bit of a spike in pressure as it hits the uh, as it hits the check valve actually, as part of what, you know, ends up happening with those. So the, the check valve, um, yeah, somewhat to a degree contributes to, to seeing the, the hammer back and forth and all of that. The, the best, the challenges are, is they're, they're very, they're basically across the lines or for us, they're not, uh, there's not any kind of mitigation within that pump, uh, the, to uh slow, to start it more slowly, to ramp it down, it's time to turn it off. So one of the recommendations, part of the uh, the pressure uh project is to install two pumps with that, with a uh variable frequency drive on such that it can be ramped up slowly and turned off slowly, such that it will get rid of that spike.
Okay.
Thank you. Oh. Uh, so, we get that, bow similarly, we, we looked at all valves uh that we could locate on the system. We uh, because we do have quite a few older valves, uh, which is under operation. We did not uh, did, did not operate all the valves when the system was verified. Uh, so up there, didn't want to cause the failures and issues within, in that based on conversations with, with town staff. So um, so we, we, we've assessed those based on the visual condition, uh, age of the system, um, others as uh, we, exactly, it's, it's feasible there. Um, you've got, you know, a total of twelve hundred thirty-nine valves out there in the system for a range of two inch up to sixteen inch uh valves. Hydrants, uh, one nice thing about hydrants is they are cast with a, a date on them. Uh, so most of the time we can tell pretty, what, what age a hydrant is and a lot of times that can give some clues to how old pipe such in that period of the system as well. Generally, it's all about, it's about the same time they install the pipe. Uh, over, over time, sometimes that, that changes, but it's a, an indicator anyway that, that we, that we consider. Um, you've got a variety manufacturers out there in the, in the system. Overall, the average age is about thirty years old on, on the hydrants. Um, there, and, and the back, the majority of the hydrants in the system are, are mowers. Uh, you've got about thirty-two American hydrants there. Um, and, and overall, it was, we did rate about a three hundred twelve. So, so seventy-five percent or less, seventy-five percent of the hydrants in, in good condition. Um, if we're in the, in the system. Tank assessments, and we, we did visit the, the tanks. We all have those tanks inspected uh by a third-party uh agency. It's every, every year, every other year. Uh, so we utilize those inspections uh from twenty twenty to, to uh assign conditions to those tanks, recommendations I had there. Um, we've got a total of uh, of five tanks, including the standby. There, uh, there are elevated storage tanks within the uh, within the system. Three of those are the main tank farm. So we've got two and a half million gallons of, of water in the, in the area. Um, you know, one, the one booster pump station, and that was a recent project in the Gill system, with, that uh, was just completed in two thousand nineteen. It's overall very good condition. Uh, since, and that site, it was set up with the uh, with the intent to eventually serve the campsite from that, from that booster pump station. So it's right now operating just to fill the Tanglewood tank, uh, that has the capacity, the, the design there to feed that sixteen inch tank because of the can when we, when we get there. So, um, so from there, matter of organized priorities, um, we're looking at the information that we gathered. Uh, draw efficiency, still that, uh, talent input for sure. I was talking to Joe and Chris about the, some of the additional lines areas that they had, uh, more issues um, with, with repairs or complaints, et cetera. I'm trying to make sure that we're addressing the issues that they, they have. So, I don't know if I'm there. So, um, from there, yeah, we're prioritizing the water pressure issue. We'll tackle Homewood first, as the piece that we have, is actually within the capital improvements plan is one, uh, actually one project together within the, we, we split that out for the purposes of funding to get, try to get Homewood first and then do the uh, the Sycamore Lake area. Uh, we go shortly behind that. Um, the uh, expansion of the water treatment plants, we have, you know, it's going to be necessary in the, the relative year, year future, especially as we, as we break home. Uh, potentially a campsite, depending on the use of that, they uh, may impact how you're, how you're prioritize that. Find out, we get a, a camp user out there that only needs a hundred thousand gallons a day instead of making out of the day, that, that probably move back a little bit further. But, um, replacing old failing and undersized lines certainly requires extend a loop, and looping the system. Hydraulic hydraulics gets a little bit further down there. And then just generally throughout the uh, overall, we're recommending to set up a valve or hydro replacement program to try to keep your valves up, and hydrants up to date and cycling out to the point that you're, uh, that you got uh functioning, uh, functioning valves and is able to, to work with the system that way. Um, so, um, we've got half of each of those projects within the uh, within the, the work there. And so the water pressure project, uh, we've actually split it into two implementations within the, the one project here, uh, which is a booster station at the Tanglewood tank, uh, the four hundred acres. Similarly, a booster pump station in the area of Sycamore Lake Road, um, is intended to, to provide a higher pressure in that particular area um, in conjunction with the uh improvements that the high service pumps for the water plant. Tackle the high source pumps to remove that hammer and go, go into B F Bs there, such that we have a constant pressure within the system, but then still, uh, even the constant pressure in that area around Sycamore Lake is already low, so we still need booster uh there to raise the, I don't know, right on that. Uh, this, this one, the uh, a bit hard to see on the map up there. The green, the green lines, uh, are lines that were proposed to be replaced. These are, are some of the uh lines that the town staff really highlighted as being uh inconsistent issues. They're mostly uh two-inch lines in that, uh, that were, that were tackled first and they would be replaced with six-inch lines in those, in those areas. The, the next one I've got there is to lower the second having water tank. Uh, that will allow, right, right now, the, that, the way that tank is sitting is basically too high to get water into it. So if we pull the tank down, the water level will be higher in it, such that it will be better utilized and able to actually function with more of its, uh, more of its volume being used over. The uh, next project we've got is the water treatment plant expansion. We've got set up about five or six years out in the uh, in the capital improvements plan. Uh, bumping it up from four M G D to, to six M G D. And again, you're, you're at, uh, you're overall at about two and a half M G D right now, but you have an A gallon a day allocated out the campsite. Putting it, putting it at three and a half M G D. So, yeah, as we, we see what happens with, with that uh potential project. Um, that's one of the major drivers in how quickly an expansion is, is necessary for the plant. The uh, next area we're looking to tackle is the North Garden Avenue area. Um, this is primarily the load, where the, the blood pressure is in. Is there somewhat over uh pipes within the system in this area? There is two inch galvanized in that section as well. Um, trying to, to knock that, one of that. There, overall, the uh, the north side at the Twelve Street area, uh, this, this super workover in this, this area. It's, it's one of the over sections of the infrastructure within the town. And it's, it's one of the over sections of the infrastructure within the town that we get more, more of there. We've got the, a loop out on Austin Bridge Road that will connect from over at the progress or anything to that long south side of town. That, so that area is currently got a dead in line there. It would help to, to reconnect that system out to the other, other side overall, loop within the, within the water system there. We've got sort of a, a northern part of, call it downtown, really part of town, area there, water line replacement project around Second Avenue. And that vicinity there, there. The, moving to the south, south side of town. Part of the stuff that's older, primarily with small land and other stuff. So areas is a problem that. The, this one's to create a loop where the, through the industrial park that's currently aligned there that comes out down with the industrial park. We want to extend that along with, with larger diameter that make that hydraulic loop function better as well. This one's out, I think in the, into the fourteen fifteen range maybe is the one. And Stockyard Road as well as being another loop and extension there. And with any capital improvement plan, you can obviously have other factories that we're not known at this time. It may be fan fact when these come in. When you get a, a large water user out on Stockyard Road, if somebody wants to work with you on, on doing that, and they're that likely to move higher on the list. There's always, always things that will lead to the change, but just given where, where that is going to be right, right now, that's where, that's where we put that. And just in looking from there, we didn't identify further direct replacements, but just in overall of your system. Looking at what happens about a hundred miles of pipe, generally your pipe that we're putting in today, we hope to last a hundred years as being, being a service like that, that pipe. So if you look at that, having that much pipe on the ground, you should be expecting to replace somewhere around a mile, over a mile worth of, of pipe every year, just to be keeping up with that bunch of the system. So that, that's where we, just those last couple of projects, I'm trying to send you out this new year sixty through twenty. Continue to, to expect that, the budget for that will fall. So really, on the, the valves and hydrants, we looked, looked at that in form of function of the expected useful life by, expected useful life of the valve. So you've got twelve hundred thirty nine valves in the system right now, based on a fifty year life cycle of valve. That means you, in order to not be getting further behind in your valves at your age, that you need to be expecting to replace by twenty, four, twenty five hours every year within the system. Either not hydrants every year within the system. So recommending to try to push to, to budget more for those, sort of annual replacements in the system of the, of the day. That's what that all, all breaks down into, which is obviously quite an aggressive overall number in twenty years. I have to look at this over, over fifty million dollars within, within twenty years. And I know it's gonna, it's gonna take some, it's gonna take some funding sources outside of the town probably to, to make that happen. But. So, so again, I, I already said. Oh, I do want to not, I said that what we're asking there is to adopt the asset management plan as the, over the pounds, the pound asset management plan. It's not, it's not a hard commitment to be collecting for these items that we do this every year, but it's a goal with, it's setting this up. It's something that we want to strive for, to acknowledge with conditioning system and the, that we want work to, to make the, the system overall that. So. The reason they give you points for that is that they want, that's what the state wants to see us do. They don't see a, a plan out there, they don't see, but they want to fund projects that are not just a knee jerk reaction and are pre, pre-planning projects versus, versus trying to detect something after it's, after it's a little too late.
Wow, this is great, and I agree with what you're saying. A few years ago, back when Brian was here, we, and Chris, you may be, have to actually, I thought we put together a plan at that time for some of the worst areas as far as the water system, and we, we sort of made a priority list of that. Did, did that list, if you did get incorporated in what we were doing here, are you aware of that or?
I'm not aware of Water Side, I know like two thousand sixteen, so we've done a series. Yeah, I was trying to think there. I know we, we've looked at a few different water, water projects over, over the years there, but I don't remember there being a, a extended list within that. We did go back to some of the former C I P documents and tried to pull the projects out of those that we could, that we could identify. And some of them predate the Gill's involvement with the town. There, there were a couple in there, as I've called it, the, the script, the only inscription of it was a couple of words in the street or, or a cost. Very little to go and identify exactly what was being referred to with that. So, yeah, because one of the projects we did was up in Mindville, that was a place of water.
I was thinking Terry Green was still here.
Yeah.
We prioritized several different neighborhoods with pipes. And we tried to get a grant, but that was nothing, we got a USDA loan, what's happened here.
Yeah, I can dig a little deeper and see if I can find something.
We replaced, we replaced online. It was always, which is the, you know, the, the houses that were having all the, the water in.
Those tanks.
Were flushing into the ice pit.
And those were parked.
Yeah.
That was in Terry's up in the last year.
Yeah, and how difficult would it be to add like another section to this project?
Oh, not, not difficult.
Because I had.
Something we anticipate to be modified and updated on, at least, at least by annual basis, if not every, every year. But yeah, if the board has others, I would, I, I would suggest that maybe that we could adopt it as it is tonight, but make the, make the.
So what you need us to do is to adopt this as the, not.
I'll make a motion that we adopt the town solace resolution to the water system asset management plan.
Thank you so much. Is there any new business that anyone has?
No ma'am. No ma'am.
Managers report.
Yeah, so the, the only item that I need to bring to the board's attention tonight is a request that we have to hold a special call meeting next Monday evening, which will be very brief. It again is tied to the funding application for the wastewater treatment plant. We have been working with the local USDA office. And due to the fact that we are applying for seventeen million dollars for that project, that's over the ten million dollar threshold. And it's required to go to the federal level for review and approval. In doing that, there is a resolution, an agreement that will need to be adopted by the board before we can file for those funds or that funding in the current fiscal year, which their year ends on September thirtieth. But we have to have this adopted by the twenty seventh or on the twenty seventh. And to be able to send it to the, the local office so that we can get that application in, because our understanding is now with some of this additional funding, we may have a better opportunity in the current year versus waiting. But we will have the option at, at some point in time to decide whether we want to move forward with whatever may be available during the current year versus what is coming up for next year and the next appropriation. So what I'm asking is for ten minutes next Monday evening, and we can, this can be held virtually. For those that, you know, don't want to come to the library, we can have a Zoom meeting so that we can move forward with that. But I, I believe that's all we needed to have them approve, correct Tina?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, I thought that was what.
Six thirty, Roy, six thirty.
Yes ma'am, and Jennifer will send out the information to the board. But again, I know that we've had a number of special call meetings recently, but they did not have everything ready tonight. And he notified Tina late this afternoon that, that it wouldn't be available. So we still need to meet that, that deadline, but thank you for that, and Jennifer will send that out.
Is that all?
Yes ma'am.
Anyone else on the board have anything to say besides those?
You want me to do this to keep you out of the.
Situation here.
I'll take, I'll keep the pressure off.
I think probably everybody got a phone call the other day. And it's something we probably would need to take up from night, but evidently there in the neighborhood down there around Jordan Matthews, there's a little bit of a concern about traffic with school that's out right there, right around school and right there, you know, at a ballgame. And there were a lot of things mentioned to it. And I took, delivered, I talked to Roy a little bit, I lost my thing, you know. I talked to Roy a little bit about it, and the good news is that the police chief is already aware of it and has been doing some observation, coming up with some proposals, different things. I don't know where he is, but he's there, and we are aware of it. A whole lot of it has to do with manpower which is expressed to the person who called. But I think at some point in time, once Roy, police chief, have had a chance to put their data together, and probably need to be on the agenda.
Yeah, there were several issues that she expressed to me, so.
And, and I will tell you, she called me first, and I said, call everybody else, so you can thank me.
And I was even supped too, they got cold.
I said, call everybody else because you need to talk to everyone. You can thank me for that.
We probably get to figure out something on the agenda, because there was a lot of concerns, mostly, you know, traffic and access, school without time.
We also just want to get worms.
Particularly for.
Some of the other streets closed.
Well, I think basically what she was talking about is right there, right around school, not out on the highway, when it current. The chief has already done some work, put some different cones and things down there. So I think we need to get some of that information, you know, before we start jumping to conclusions about the other. Because the gist of what I got, it was right there in that, right about, right there in front of the school, whatever that street is. Right there, in that area, right there.
So she gave, she gave me six specifically delineated issues.
One of the things that, that I did mention was that I was gonna, I'm gonna try to touch base with Mr. Bligh to make sure they have a traffic count set up but the other thing, are you all finished with the Jordan Matthews? Are y'all finished with the Jordan Matthews stuff?
Yeah, Rick does.
Okay, I just wanted to thank Mr. McCormandale and Mr. Witt for coming over and walking with me around my area just to look at some concerns that we have. So thank you all, and they got a lift. And one of them has to do with us, the road, we just got a nice road paved and our pipes, but then there they, is it, is a hole or was it, that's already there? I don't know if it's, what it was.
Yeah, I think it's the water right out there. We gotta investigate a little more. David Seagull mentioned this.
So I, I ran over it yesterday.
All right, are we done, are we done, anybody else? We're done, John.